So, good evening, everyone. Counsel, I am going to call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand with me in saying the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Cheryl, will you do your call?
Present.
Present.
Okay. I guess I am looking for a move to excuse both Chuck and Jermaine. I don't see her. She was here earlier. I'm sorry, who made the movement? Okay. Second?
Second.
It was moved by Councilwoman Kinser and seconded by Councilwoman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? All right. Approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I had one question on that. Would there be any reason that we couldn't move the unfinished business to the consent agenda?
No. There'd be some discussion on that? It's the EMS?
Oh, yeah. I'll second his motion.
Well, he didn't make a motion.
Oh, didn't he? Oh, okay.
I moved to move letter L, unfinished business, item one, the emergency medical services EMS update and action plan to the consent agenda from the regular agenda.
So, I have a motion, seconded, okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Dunleavy. Any discussion? We are moving the unfinished business as stated by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We can just check that right off our list.
So, now I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Dunleavy and seconded by Kinser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items one through four. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items one through four.
Second?
Actually, would be items one through five.
All right. So, yeah, let's say those items one through four, including the emergency medical services. How's that? Okay. So, motion by Couch, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staff reports. Good evening. Chief Tucker.
All right. Just a couple of things. We had a, one of our officers got punched out at the, little fight out at the Skagit Motel here last weekend. I don't know that the lady who punched him remembers anything from that altercation, and she punched him square in the armor, so he was not hurt. I don't know if she was hurt much. And one thing I did want to ask, while I have counsel, is I've been asked to speak at the Candidates Forum on the 16th on the initiative 940, and one of the things Aaron had suggested was that counsel hadn't sounded off on that yet, and I wanted to ask, I guess I can kind of share what my thoughts are on it. The organization I belong to, WASPIC, and the Fraternal Order of Police are...
So, Lynn?
What's that?
In order for the counsel to actually take a position on an initiative on the ballot, we have to have a public hearing and invite both sides to it. So, I think it's fine to ask the question about, you know, what you're talking about without getting into the pros or cons of the initiative itself.
Yeah, and so before, I guess, just to ask, is there any thoughts, concerns on me speaking, or should I abstain from that?
Jared?
I think you, you know, you work for the mayor, but as a councilperson, I would support you speaking at that. It's in your wheelhouse as the chief of police.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot here, just I was asked by Senator Wagner if I could, if I would do this as well as the organizers of it, so, and I thought, better make sure I'm not stepping outside the boundary, so I wanted to run that by you. If anybody has any questions or concerns, feel free to ask. I appreciate it. And I really don't have anything else to offer. Thank you.
All right. Good luck at the forum. Chief Klinger?
Mayor, we had a couple of things. We had our, the Volunteer Association held their fundraiser for the Burn Children's Recovery Foundation this last Saturday night, and they earned somewhere in the neighborhood of right around $34,000 that they'll be able to, once they take their expenses out, they'll be sending to the kids. It should be somewhere, you know, on the north side of $30,000, which is far more than we did last year, and it's really a great thing. And thank you for all the cameras, people that attended the event. We had a great time. I think everybody that was there had a good time. On the EMS side of things, we've been working on the second round of interviews. We started them today, and we have them begin tomorrow and again on Friday. So, it's just been, like we've said in the past, it's EMS every day, all day here, and we're, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We've seen it, and we know it's there. We just haven't got there yet. We've been working on the building out here. Nathan and his crew, Kevin Cassidy, have been working diligently in getting this new quarter for the medics built. They've got the concrete coming in tomorrow. They'll finish pouring the floor in the forms. They've actually started laying some of the seal plate down. That's our intent that, first part, next week, they'll start putting walls up. So, things are moving right along on that, which is fantastic. We had our, as I said at the last council meeting, we were doing pump tests all this week. We still have a day, if anybody's interested, wants to come up and watch. We have one more day of it tomorrow. We'll be finishing up doing pump tests on Cedar Woolley's District Eight vehicles up there at Station Two. And we got a verbal phone call from Survey and Rating Bureau, and we haven't got the official written notice yet, but it looks like we were able to keep our classification. We'll be staying at a five. We didn't drop down to six, which is good, but we didn't make it to a four either, and we're still waiting to find out why we didn't move up one slot, because we've doubled, the personnel doubled the stations and doubled the vehicles. We think that should count for something, so we're anxious to find out what the holdup is there. But it's been a very busy week. I know Aaron's got some more he'll probably put out on the EMS side, but other than that, it's just been EMS, 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 and we're happy that it's almost done, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
So, follow up on Chief Klinger's discussion. Building Department also was required to do the Washington Survey Rating Bureau. They required us to fill out a bunch of paperwork explaining how our building department meets building codes and how experienced everybody is in the department. We too were notified that we're likely not to change, which, you know, it's a relief to not go down, but, you know, I am curious why we weren't able to get bumped up, considering our plans examiner and building inspector has far more certs than the average person. And so, I also did ask them to maybe talk to us about why, you know, how we can improve in the future, and they're like, oh, we've never done that before. Uh, I don't know. So, they're going to work on doing that for us. And aside from that, the planning department's been super busy. You've probably seen lots of notices out on the board or talked to people in the community that maybe ask you about some notices that they've received, because I've mailed, I'm trying to do count, I have a 28-unit apartment building that has a notice application and CEPA that went out, three soil projects that sent out notices all over the city, a long plat that sent out notices, and more going out on that. Four short plats, so zoning waiver, conditional use hearing that we had last week, and there's still more notices going on that. So, we've put out well over a dozen, probably close to 20, public notices over the past three or four weeks, and with still more to come. So, lots of people are receiving things, and you may be hearing from people out in your area that are curious, what's all this stuff going on? So, you can always refer them to me. And then I'm going to be talking about what the Planning Commission finished up at their last meeting under new business later, so I will leave, leave time for other people to talk, because I'm going to have a little more to say later.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Freiberger?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if you've been around the downtown area, you notice we've been pretty busy. SRV is contractor doing the water main work on State Street and Northern. They're well into the project now after a week of challenges because of old concrete pavements they found everywhere they're dug. They are moving ahead. Their schedule calls for them to pave by October 31st, which is pretty aggressive, considering we're already into the second week of October. Fruitdale, paving began on that today. They put the two lifts down, the first two lifts down at the Roundabout, and also paved to the city limits. I didn't make it up there this afternoon to see if they finished that, but the intention was to do everything in the closed part of the road today, and that tomorrow they'll start the part from McGargle up to the Northern State's entrance. By Friday, that should be done, and if we get the paving done soon enough Friday, we'll open the road up and get that back in service. That's still subject to a little discretion. The guardrail's not up yet, and I may decide not to open it because of that. But anyway, we're getting closer all the time. Contractor will be down to cleanup work and finishing a couple pieces of sidewalk that were left out for the temporary road next week. We should be able to give them substantial completion by the end of next week, and we'll have to wait about 20 days for the asphalt to cure before we do the final pavement markings, and then that project will be complete. The sidewalk, from Township to Fruitdale on the north side of Highway 20, they've completed all the sidewalk work, and I believe they completed the last of the asphalt patching today. So, that one's down to doing the topsoil and seeding and cleanup. Should be done by the end of next week, I believe is what the schedule is for that one. I am working on specifications for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. I expect to have that out to add next week. We're also putting together the bid specs for the preload project for the library, so been pretty busy in there. David's keeping an eye on all of his projects, and I'm looking at mine. We also have a number of planning things going on as we've talked about in the past, so thank you.
I have to say, Mark, the road work up at Fruitdale, the Roundabout, the entrance to the Swift Center, that's all looking great. That's going to be beautiful when it's done, yeah.
I had some compliments from the neighbors today.
Great.
Also, some pre-warnings that they'll be calling us as soon as the traffic is back on Fruitdale's.
Oh, great.
They're looking forward to complaining about that. Couple of people have bought that places up there while it was closed, assuming it was going to continue quiet, and of course, it won't be quite as quiet after that's done. I should probably mention also, I've been looking into some of the council items from the last few meetings, some stop sign requests and some site distance issues, and the stop signs, Lynn and I have talked about following up together on those, and I'll be reporting back sometime the next month or so on that. As you probably realize, I've been kind of busy, and it's been hard to squeeze much time out for those. The site distance issues, Nathan has in his hands, and I don't remember who asked, but one did about the intersection of McGargle and Highway Nine, the corner that sort of would be the southeast corner, which has been kind of a grown-up, bit of a mess over the years. We do have that trimmed all the way back to the right-of-way lines there, and it works. You have to edge out on McGargle to see around that corner, but unless we do an enforcement action on the property owner, that's as far as we can go on the right-of-way. So, I think it's workable, but we could go farther if that continues to be a concern. And the other ones mentioned, we're looking into.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Berg?
I've just been busy helping all these people do all these things, and that's all I've got to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Merriman?
All right. Thank you. In the finance area, we have lots going on. As you can imagine, it's budget time right now, and that's progressing along well. One of the new pieces we're having to do this year is put the budget in for the new EMS program. And now that the other entities have been approving that agreement, we have the green light to really start pursuing that and getting in there. So, that'll be some new pieces you'll see as part of the budget this year. Couple other things going on. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee convened, and we went through and reviewed applications for tourism support activities, and they do have a recommendation coming forward to council at your next council meeting. You will see that on the agenda. Couple other things going on. One is probably this next week, we will be aggressively pursuing some banks in the area, looking to obtain financing for the library project. And I've spoken with three banks already, and what we're trying to do is possibly go out and do a request for proposal for banking services for that loan in particular. So, if you hear us talking about an RFP, that Request for Proposal, that'll be coming out soon. That's what I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Couch?
Just a couple of quick things on, I wanted to send my thanks to Aaron and Dean and Frank, the mayor, everybody, the hard work on the EMS stuff. It actually came up at a WOPS meeting that I was at, and the city of Anacortes was complaining about their police department wasn't getting more people, because they had to hire EMTs and the city had to fund it, and was able to offer some insight to the guys that were complaining about it and highlight some of the positives that I think it's going to bring to the county. So, I appreciate all you guys' hard work on that. I had a couple complaints about a project, the project over on Jones Road, and Mark's office has continued to follow up really well, and I got positive feedback from the landowner. So, Mark, thank you for your staff and the follow-up on that, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cordogay?
I just kind of wanted to bring up again the Community Action Event. It's actually happening tomorrow night. I spoke at a SoOptimus meeting the other night. It's tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Swinomish Casino. I'm sure, I'm sure it's, that it's pretty, it's pretty full, but I know that they, they just said yesterday you can get more people in, so if you're interested in going, probably can go to their website. It's only $25, and it's at the Swinomish Casino. Another thing, I wanted to thank Mark for the dip sign finally at the, I didn't even think of that as an option before. I was thinking it needed to be, the road needs to be fixed at the driveway behind Tezrec Park, and it's, it works as a reminder every time I'm going over that. Thank you so much, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kinser?
I've got a couple of items that I wanted to talk about. One is I just returned from a Peace Health Conference and was able to hear from an incredible speaker. He wrote this book called Fully Alive, and it was the son of Sergeant Yunus Shriver, so Maria Shriver's brother, and the nephew of John Fitzgerald Kennedy. He currently chairs the Special Olympics, and he was an incredible speaker, and he talked to us about otherness, and I thought it was incredibly moving, because we all do it. We all put other people in different categories and separate ourselves from them, and I thought the more we try not to do that, the more we try to look at each other as a part of our community and as a part of the whole, it's a great thing. So, I recommend him and his book, and if you have a chance to read it. The other thing is, is that Peace Health also opened the Cedar Woolley clinics next door to the hospital, and if you haven't got in there yet, you'll notice that when you do, that the hallways are named for the city streets here in Cedar Woolley, which I thought was pretty incredible. They did say that they'd had a complaint that there wasn't anything from the concrete area or the Upper Skagit Tribe, so who knows? We may see some new changes yet down there. But they do have a walk-in clinic now. There's a pharmacy there. They have a goal to have 10 primary care providers plus several specialties, and I think we should work to support that effort within our own district here. And the other thing is Halloween is coming up. I haven't got my special event request in yet, but Chief Tucker, can I count on you to block those streets for us for that little bit of time it takes for those kids to scurry down the street and get from...
Absolutely. I'll be standing there, starting them off, and then we've got a, we're going to set up at the gazebo and hand out, I think they've got some little glow-in-the-dark things, and I got some of our police patch with the pumpkin sticker and all that. We're going to be at the other end as well. We'll be there for a couple hours.
Okay. And I heard that our pirate would like to be near the front of the parade, and that our Batmobile would like to be at the end of the parade, so I said that probably works. We usually don't have vehicles in the, in this parade, but if they're...
I think the Batmobile's been following up with that for a while now, so that works out really well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Councilman DeYoung?
Thank you. The Saturday was the final installment of a six-part series over the summer and spring on Civic Discourse, and completed that. Thank you, PUD, for opening up the awkward room for us to finish that up. Our sticky issue that we used, our skills that we've been developing over the spring and summer, was homelessness in Skagit County, and we had some folks that were homeless, that were part of the discussions in every discussion group, and it was fantastic to be able to have government, community activists, advocates, finance folks, folks who are there for data in the sense of research, who are participating, and to have media there as participants, not just as reporters, and getting their feedback from all those different and divergent groups that have different voices, and that to honor those and to acknowledge when they're not in the room of who's not being heard when we're making policy. It was a very good thing that helped toward my own personal edification and development, and I'm very grateful that the League of Women Voters, Skagit County, and of course, the Volunteers of America, help put on, and the city of Cedar Woolley and other sponsors participated in. I'm very glad that that was something I could participate in.
All right. And I think the only thing that I have tonight is I just want to let the public know, it's, this came out in the paper, but we are going to be holding a public hearing at the next council meeting, which is October 24th. It'll be at 7:00 PM. As Doug was telling you, we're working on the budget, and so with this public hearing, you'll have a chance to give us some feedback on the budget. All right. Other than that, I think that I had just stepped right on ahead, and I missed the smoking and vapor presentation. Are you ready?
Not vapor.
Not vapor?
Not a vapor.
Yes, if that, if that works for you.
And may I just ask how much time I have? I want to be respectful of your time.
Okay. 15 minutes? Can you do it in 15 minutes?
Fantastic. Okay. Hi. Thank you for having us. We so appreciate the time to come and speak with you all today. So, I'm here. My name's Danica Sessions. I am talking on behalf of Skagit County Public Health in the Prevention Division, and we are currently working on a no vaping ordinance in public places, and that has been a process that we've been working through since truly April and May. We've been working with a third-party consultant, Margaret Shield, who is not here this evening, but she's been instrumental in working towards the ordinance. So, just to give you a little bit of context before I jump into the rest of the presentation and I talk a little bit more about what is vaping, why is it a health concern. The ordinance, we brought our proposals in front of the Skagit County Board of Health, and that would have been July 25th of this year, and we were green-lighted to move forward with our ordinance. So, they gave us a timeframe of 60 to 90, I'm sorry, 90 to 120 days to draft our ordinance, which we're doing in-house, and then to propose the actual ordinance to them at that time. In the interim, they've asked us, the Prevention Division, to do a roadshow, if you will, to go and speak with all city councils in Skagit County to discuss what we're proposing, to discuss the health concerns relating to vaping and e-cigarettes, in order to really gain some buy-in in the community before we move forward with this ordinance. So, let's move forward. Okay. And I believe you all should have the PowerPoints in your packets as well, and because of time, I'm going to kind of jump around a little liberally, so I apologize, but there is plenty of information here, and I urge that, you know, in your, in your free time, if you have some, to give this a second look, because it is quite a lot of information. So, just a brief agenda, but I'd like to try to cover this evening. A real quick overview of tobacco prevention challenges and public health concerns, an overview of e-cigarettes and vaping devices, because what we found while doing these presentations is that while our kids, our youth might know what these devices look like, a lot of times adults might not, so a quick overview on that. An overview of current laws in Washington State pertaining to vaping devices, as well as some county-level efforts that we're doing at public health, and our proposals, our local options that we're proposing. Okay. So, why are we still talking about tobacco? That's, that's something that I hear frequently, and to be truly honest, it was the question I asked when I first came into this position and became funded under the Tobacco Prevention Grant. Why are we still talking about tobacco? I thought that that was dealt with, you know, a decade, two decades ago. But the problem is, is that while we're seeing statistically the number of people utilizing the combustible cigarettes, that has been decreasing over the course of several decades. That is not true amongst some different populations. Our biggest concern would be the youth population. Tobacco use has actually skyrocketed just within the last two to three years, and it's really because of the creation of these vaping devices that we're seeing that spike in use. Okay. So, our public health concerns, I'm sorry, I'm chewing out of mint because I've got a sore throat. Potential health effects that come from vaping devices, that come specifically from vaping devices that you wouldn't necessarily see in combustible cigarettes. The rapidly increasing use amongst our teens, and there's a social norming piece that I'll discuss on that issue there. The vaping of other drugs, other substances with the vaping devices, that is of concern, and also the high risk of poisonings with the e-juice, the liquid that actually goes into the vaping devices. So, when I come, oh, I'm supposed to point over here. There we go. Okay. So, when I come and do these presentations, I always bring my vaping kit. I'm not going fishing. This is a vaping kit that we had purchased from the Washington Poison Center. They give these to different entities so that you can go out and do tobacco prevention within your community, and it's a really great kit, although when you open it, you just get this waft of the sweet, kind of sickly-sweet smell of the e-juice, so that's always, I have not gotten used to that. So, in this kit, I have a few different types of vaping devices, and you'll see on the slide... So when I come, oh, I'm supposed to point over here. There we go. Okay. So when I come and do these presentations, I always bring my, my vaping kit. I'm not going fishing. This is a vaping kit that we had purchased from the Washington Poison Center. They give these to, to different entities so that you can go out and do tobacco prevention within your community. And it's a really great kit, although when you open it, you just get this waft of the sweet, kind of sickly-sweet smell of, of the e-juice. So that's always, I, I have not gotten used to that. So in this kit, I have a few different types of vaping devices. And you'll see on the slide, there's really three kind of traditional, traditional vaping devices that we've seen. The first would be your Sig Light. These come prepackaged, pre-filled with nicotine. You buy them at the store individually, and they are pre-charged. So you just go ahead and, you know, suck on one, and there you go. Each one, give or take, has about the same nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. So once you use it, you throw it in the trash. So keep in mind, you're throwing a lithium ion battery in the trash every single time you use one of these, so that's not, that's not great. The other thing, the other device that you might see is a vape pen. They sometimes look something like this. The vape pen, these were really popular 2013, 2014 was when you were seeing these a lot, when they first came out on the market. These are refillable. You can open them up and put in all of the delicious flavors, watermelon, mocha, you know, strawberry, shortcake. The e-juice, that's what you use to refill the pens. Then you have, and I don't want this to fall. Oh, and I, I don't even have one in here. That's unfortunate. So the third category that you have is the mods. The mods, those are the large brick-sized vaping devices. They're called mods because you can modify them. You can put a different-sized battery in them. You can heat them to much higher degrees. Those are the vaping devices where you see the large billow of vapor when people utilize them. Those are the kinds that young adolescents go into vaping competitions and see who can blow the biggest vape ring. So those are the mods. Now, those are all concerning, yes. But our primary concern, when we're talking about youth prevention right now in 2018, going into 2019, is not these three here. Our biggest concern is the Juul. Who here, just raise a hand, has heard of the Juul? Okay. The Juul, this is a completely different animal, and it makes up 65% of the market share amongst vapor devices right now in the USA. It looks like this in the box, and the box reads Juul Device USB Charger, USB Charger. It's actually charged using your computer. And it looks very much like a flash drive. And one of my coworkers used this one. They must have taken the, oh, there it is. Okay. It looks like a flash drive. Okay. 65% of the market share. These use salt-based nicotine in them. They are not refillable. These come with little flavor cartridges. Each cartridge has the same amount of nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. But what we're seeing is that youth, they will utilize a Juul, and whereas with combustible cigarette, where you have to make that conscious decision to light up another one, we're finding that kids in school, they'll go to the bathroom and they'll suck on one of these for 35 minutes. And then they'll come back from the bathroom complaining of stomachaches and headaches and nausea, and they're wondering what's going on. Washington Poison Center has gotten a spike in phone calls with the same symptoms as nicotine poisoning, but they don't understand that that's what's actually happening to them. So what's in the vapor? People, I think, and, and here, believe that e-cigarettes, that vaping devices are healthier than combustible cigarettes. And they're not just getting that information out of nowhere. The Juul is actually marketed as a cessation device for adult smokers. So, you know, just listening to the radio ads, people believe that this is a cleaner, this is a more environmentally friendly method for either quitting smoking, or it's an alternative to smoking. But just because it might be safer in some people's eyes does not mean that it's safe. And what we're seeing is that, from research, that, that there are many health concerns relating to vaping and vapor that might be different from combustible cigarettes, but it is still very much a concern. So one of the biggest concerns with the vapor is the flavoring. And unfortunately, due to Washington State preemption law, we cannot do anything about flavoring right now. While with combustible cigarettes, we have not been able to go out and buy a clove in Washington State for over a decade, that same, that same regulation does not exist with the e-cigarettes. And there is nothing that we can do as a county to, to, to push that in a different direction. Just recently, in the news, San Francisco passed a law against flavors in vaping devices, but they don't have the preemption law like we do in Washington State. So that's not great news, but hold on, we've, we've got, we've got room for improvement. So with the vaping devices, the flavoring, the biggest concern, it's, it's a chemical called diacetal. And diacetal, that is popcorn lung. I don't know if anyone's heard of that in the news as of late, but it's the same flavoring that gives popcorn that buttery, buttery flavor. And what they're seeing amongst employees who are working at the popcorn factories is that they are developing popcorn lung. It's literal holes in your lungs that cannot be fixed, and it is life-threatening. While diacetal has been approved for some time for ingestion, when it comes to inhalation, we don't know yet what the long-term health effects are of diacetal. And that's only just one chemical compound in these flavorings. Another issue is the, the degree to which you heat up these vaping devices when you use them, over 400 degrees at times, especially with the mods. And when you're heating up the, the metals to that high temperature, you're, you're breathing in that, that metal into your lungs as well. So many concerns. It's not just water vapor going into your lungs. So why do we care? We care in the Prevention Division because we're looking at youth. We're looking at long-term health effects relating to vaping. From our Healthy Youth Survey, and this is 2016, we're going to be getting data from the 2018 Healthy Youth Survey in the next few months, but from 2016, like I've mentioned before, we've seen combustible cigarette use decreasing for some time now, but we're seeing a spike in the e-cigarette use, in the vaping use. In 2016, that was still when Juul was relatively new. So I'm, I'm quite anxious to see what the, the data is going to show for 2018. We know statistically that kids, if they start smoking, if they start vaping early on, that they're more likely to be addicted to tobacco later on in life. And we're also seeing that if they begin with an e-cigarette, that they're more likely to eventually move towards combustible cigarettes. So if you vape, you know, if your friend doesn't vape and you vape, you are far more likely statistically to start using combustible cigarettes. So this is just a little bit more data showing where we compare to Washington State as a whole. And our eighth graders are not looking so good. In eighth grade, you know, that's, that's, that's an interesting time for youth. It's, you know, a lot of transition for youth. And so, you know, we're just trying to do everything we can to make sure that our eighth graders and then our, you know, our future Skagit County residents are, are healthy and happy. This slide here shows that a lot of youth do not perceive what they're vaping is anything other than flavorings. And we know, we just talked about how flavorings aren't so great either, but many of our students don't realize that the Juul specifically has nicotine in it. So when they're complaining of the stomachaches, they don't understand what's happening. They don't understand that what they are using actually contains nicotine. Whether or not this information is true, you know, it's, it's based on what they're disclosing in the Healthy Youth Survey. This is the data that I was talking about with the, the spikes in the calls to the Washington Poison Center. The one on the bottom is really concerning to me. As a parent, I, I have an 18-month-old, and, and they're seeing that the calls are for kids zero to five mostly. And that's because the e-juice that I talked about, these, these flavors, right, that come in these little stoppers, just a teaspoon is lethal to an infant. And these, just as of 2016, now Washington State and actually the, the country as a whole, they're, the, the creators of these e-juice are required to make childproof safety locks, but these things crack open so easily. So we really want to change the way people think about, you know, vaping in front of their kids for a social norming component. You know, if you're seeing your parents doing it, their friends doing it, people all around you in your community doing it, you're more likely to think that it's okay. But we also want to make sure that parents know that these things need to be locked up, just like you would lock up your marijuana edibles, or your prescription pain medication, or your guns. You know, this is a dangerous substance, and it needs to be treated that way. There's also concern about these items overheating and exploding. I don't know if you've heard that in the news, but there has been many reports of, especially the mods, exploding, and that's because they are so lacking in federal regulation. You can purchase one from another country on Amazon, and you have no idea what the inner workings of your vaping device looks like. And yet, you breathe it in and hold it to your face, and it's being lit to over 450 degrees Fahrenheit. So for time, I'm going to, going to jump. So in Washington State, we have pretty heavy ordinances when it comes to smoking in public places. You can't smoke in a commercial res, you know, I can't smoke in here. I can't smoke anywhere where there might be somebody working, and that could be within a building, or it could be on a patio, like at a restaurant. I can't smoke a combustible cigarette anywhere where a kid or where a youth congregates. So, and I, I can't smoke within 25 feet of a building where there's a door, window, or ventilation system. What we're asking is for the same type of regulation for vaping devices for all of the reasons that I just explained. And so that's truly what our proposal is. And you also have to think about the, the, the ability to vape other substances in these items. And the Juul, the Juul, it's really hard to crack open the canisters and put in your marijuana, your THC concentrates, but there is products on the market that looks just like the Juul, where you can smoke marijuana concentrates and you don't get the odor, and you really don't get much vapor at all. And we're seeing on Instagram and other social media platforms that youth are engaging in, in competitions to see who can Juul in the classroom, who can get away with vaping behind their teacher's back. So there is potential to, to vape other substances as well that we need to think about. Okay. So I talked about the, the lack of regulation that we're dealing with here, our local regulations. So different cities have kind of adopted over time their own policies pertaining to the smoking in public places laws. There's some cities who have ordinances on vaping, but if you look at the map, Skagit County, we, we're kind of out there. I like to, to say that we need to give it the boot, right? We need to kind of complete that blue shape and, and catch up with our neighbors to the north and to the south. Okay. So those are just some of the areas listed that have ordinances already in place. What we're doing, we're working on social norming. We're working on prevention education in schools, behavioral health, or, behavioral health service providers, housing providers, housing authorities. Next stop really is retail, going and talking to local business owners about this. Okay. So truly, we're asking for the same ordinances, the same regulation as we have with smoking in public places that we've had now for many years here. So that would be signage, that would be, you know, commercial, where kids congregate, that type of thing. So that's, that's what we're working on now. And that's just a lovely graphic from Snohomish Health, because they make beautiful infographics. It's just, you have to share. But yeah. Any, any questions on this? I know it's a lot of information.
There's a lot. I just want to thank you because that's a lot of information, but I didn't know most of that information. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How do you see enforcement of it? I mean, how, how could, you know, Lynn get away with enforcing that?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question, and it's one that we get pretty frequently. So as of right now, with the smoking in public places law that we have in Skagit County, complaints go to the Environmental Health Division at Public Health. And they issue a letter to the place of business or whomever it is, the housing provider, and it, you know, just reinstates the, or, it, you know, explains the current ordinance, the current laws, and it offers, you know, technical assistance and, you know, improving, right? If not followed, then it would go to further enforcement. In that case, we, you know, might bring in law enforcement. What we've found, though, is that we get less than one call, less than one letter per year about the smoking in public places law. So so far, it hasn't been a concern. And so, and we've also looked at other counties like Snohomish. We, we're looking at them very closely, their process for passing their ordinance, what come their process, and also talked to them about their enforcement so far. And they have also repeated the same, that, that so far, very little has come out by way, by way of need to provide enforcement.
Well, that said, certainly around most of the drinking establishments in town, the idea of a 25-foot away from the doors looks pretty iffy to me. And it does tend to be, you know, like you see the cigarette butts, like, all in a circle around there. So, you know, I'm concerned that if we have another device that we want to monitor and enforce, certainly they're not going to be leaving the cigarette butts around and where you have a, what you call it, a combustible? You're not going to be able to put that in your pocket if you see the police coming down your way. So I just wonder if you had...
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you. You know, and I primarily probably see more of vapes being used with substances that aren't sold with them, but I think it's outstanding. I think that the city needs to look at putting vapes basically in the same category as cigarettes. And because I, not to be naive, but I think, you know, maybe eight out of 10, or nine out of 10 people are going to see the sign, you know, and it becomes that social norm. You know, it, yes, it's Cedar Wully, but I've, you could walk into any bar downtown and you're not going to see anybody lighting up a cigarette. It's just, it's training the mind, and, you know, if we can impact and make a little bit of a difference and it not, you know, the youth seeing people vaping in downtown or outside of bars, you know, maybe it makes a small difference. So it's a, it's kind of a no-brainer that we need to, to do something about it.
I'm going to use that training the mind, because it really is that social norming component. We're coming from prevention, right? I'm thinking about prevention the long term, and, and that, that's what it is. It's changing the way that we think about it. 20 years ago, smoking was very much different, right? If I lit up in here, it might have gone over a little bit different than how it would go now. So yeah, it, it very much is the, the long, long game.
And I understand that. And certainly, you know, we were just discussing how, like, putting a seatbelt on or putting your child in a car seat, those things have changed significantly since my kids were little. So.
Yeah, right.
It is, it, kids just expect it now.
Right. And, and that's why, you know, the commissioners, I think, didn't want to just move forward with the ordinance, and, and that was it. They, they very much pushed for us to begin building that, that community buy-in and the education piece. You know, for example, I'm, I'm going to an elementary school next week to, to talk about vaping devices. Last, you know, two weeks ago, I was at Skagit Pediatrics. So there very much is an education component to this as well.
I actually have a question regarding those who are in the room who are not vaping but are receiving that...
Second-hand.
Yes, exactly. What, is there any information regarding that as to how it's impacting those individuals?
Yep, there is. They have done studies where they test the blood content of people, you know, within a certain, a vicinity of, of people who are vaping, and there is nicotine present in their, in their blood. So yes, it, it does exist. And then there's also the issue of third-hand smoke, which is true with combustible, but we don't talk about it as much, but... third-hand smoke, which is true with combustible, but we don't talk about it as much. But third-hand spoke, it's, third-hand smoke is the chemical that gets into blinds, or carpeting, or that type of thing. So, when I mentioned that just a teaspoon of this E juice is lethal to an infant, if you have a kiddo who's crawling around on the carpet all day, every day, you know, there is a nicotine content that you're gonna find in them. It's, it's just reality.
And our pets. Our pets are being impacted.
And our pets, too. Yeah.
So, there's no other comments or questions?
I have something to ask off.
Sure.
I can't remember, because I'm not a smoker, but I can't remember if it is illegal to smoke. It is, right, with your kids in the car?
Yes.
A second-hand, that's, I think that's illegal now.
Yes.
But, so that, would that also apply here, like kind of what she was saying?
Yeah, I think that would be next step. That, I don't think that was in the first round of smoking in public places laws, when it was first passed. I believe it was 1996. But, you know, that's something that we would, we would definitely be looking at in the long term. Yeah, it's really, it's places of business where somebody might be employed, and also where children congregate. So, and we have the ability to push our ordinances further than state ordinances. So, there's, you know, there is an option to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've had a long day. I heard your presentation this morning on MV Hope.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's been a long one.
Anyway, thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you so much.
As Jermaine said, it was great information.
Thanks.
I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Janiky in the back. Thank you for being here this evening. Yes. All right. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, the materials that you heard today are on the city's website. They're located under the City Council Packet as Other Materials. Oh, I had one question, if you don't mind. Is the county public health department intending to promulgate a model ordinance that they would hope that the four cities would potentially adopt? Could be the same for all the four cities in the county?
That's not something I would see, but I'd take that question.
That's a good question.
It seems like a natural follow-up to your request, because then you would have harmony in the rules essentially across, you know, the county.
Yeah. Good evening.
Erin, I asked that question when this presentation came to us this summer, and whether it was, had to be, whether this had to be passed jurisdiction by jurisdiction. My understanding in it is that the county health department for rules of this applies across the county. But I certainly think if there's a resolution of support, or in fact, you know, a matching resolution, it would be, I think, a great show of, you know, cooperation and unanimity on this, on this issue.
Yes, it would be easier.
But that's, that's how I understood, they answered that question when I asked it earlier. So, good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, it is 7:53, and I am going to open it up to public comment. If anybody has a public comment, please remember to limit it to three minutes and give your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Hannah, and I'm here on behalf of the Cedroly Christmas Committee. And I just want to take a few minutes here and kind of let you guys know, the last three years, the city council has been able to donate $1,000, you know, towards the grand parade and everything. You know, each year, we try and offer lots of family-friendly and free things for families to come and do. You know, that includes, you know, the pony rides, and the train rides, and, you know, arts and crafts with the Boys and Girls Club. We really hope to be able to, you know, continue offering this with, you know, the city's support, and of course, the support of all of our sponsors. You know, it would be really hard to do this if we didn't have the help of, you know, Joanne. She makes sure that branches staging of, you know, the parade route is beautiful each year. Nathan makes sure we get the tree each year, and it's set up correctly. And then, you know, the police and private department, of course, are always there to lend a helping hand with setup, and, you know, block those streets off, and all of that stuff that, you know, is actually very important behind the scenes. We've already chosen Chief Klinger for the grand marshal this year. And, you know, if we, we have most of our usual sponsors on board to make it, you know, a success again this year. And, you know, with the council's okay, we would like to print our posters and get them distributed, and have the city beautiful and ready for, you know, our Christmas parade that I think a lot of families, and I hope, you know, the majority of you guys here really, really enjoy having that as something our city does every single year.
Well, I, is there any opposition at all to putting the posters up by the council?
No.
No. Yeah, no, the parade is a grand parade. I'm one of those people who looks forward to it every year. Yes, absolutely.
And you're looking for a motion to approve $1,000 for the parade?
Yes, ma'am.
In the city? I make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. Everybody.
Okay. So, we had a motion by Councilwoman Jermaine to approve the $1,000 to, it would be the chamber, correct?
Yes.
For the parade, the Christmas parade, seconded by Dunley. Is that all right?
Sure.
Any discussion?
I would need to abstain from this vote.
All right.
And it is in a budget already, so whatever.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? We're looking forward to that parade.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Hannah.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, 7:57, and I'm gonna close the public comment. Moving on to new business, and I guess that's you, John.
Okay, so, the city council's probably, probably heard me talk quite a bit about the Planned Residential Development Regulations that the Planning Commission's been working on for, I think it came down to 16 different planning commission meetings. So, the Planning Commission has completed it. They certainly were thorough, took their time to make sure that it was, you know, they produced a product that the city council would be interested in passing. So, I'm gonna give a very brief explanation of what a Planned Residential Development is. So, you'll hear the acronym PRD over and over. And what a Planned Residential Development is, is really just an alternate optional method of subdividing land for residential purposes. And in some Planned Residential Development Regulations, including the proposed ones, there is also an allowance for a small amount of commercial in a residential area, so which would be different than, which normally not be allowed in that zoning, but it's intentionally kept small, intended to be like a convenience store, or something to serve that immediate neighborhood, small in scale. So, in case you're following in your packet, the memo is on page 35. The proposed draft Planned Residential Development regs are on page 40 through 49, and then the proposed design regulations are on page 50 to 55. So, I have a slideshow here of, I think it's three slides. So, trying to keep it brief. First, I wanted to talk about, you know, under our current standards, we have a requirement that no lot be under a certain size in the R5 zone, R7 zone, the R1 zone. That means, in the R5 zone, minimum lot size is 8,400 square feet, whereas technically, the underlying zoning allowance is for five units per acre. So, what I can tell you is, when you do 8,400 square foot lots, you can't get five units per acre, especially after you subtract for roads. So, you'll see on here, roads, and critical areas, and stormwater. So, what that means is, even though technically, you're allowed to have, you know, five units per acre, say, so that would be 50 units on a 10-acre piece of land, after you put the roads and stormwater, and even if there's no critical areas, you're not going to get anywhere near that number of lots. So, what the Planned Residential Development Regulations do, so this is the same piece of land going back and forth, laid out under a traditional standard subdivision with minimum lot sizes, and you can see a fairly uniform-sized lots. And then, under, using a Planned Residential Development Code, you can get more units on, because, I'll explain how that works in a minute. You get your base density. Say, in a 10-acre lot, you would get 50 units. So, you're allowed to do smaller lots, and a variety of lots, and a variety of housing styles. So, in a PRD, you can achieve the kind of development that you might see in, I don't know, suburban Seattle somewhere, where you'd have a common area, and duplexes, triplexes, and maybe townhomes mixed in amongst the resident, the single-family residential units. So, under the more flexible Planned Residential Development Regulations, you get smaller lot, you'll get smaller lots, but you get more open space. Also, one of the basic tenets of Planned Residential Development is a higher level of design review, and just overall aesthetic improvement over a standard, what I'll call a low bar for subdivision. So, you set a higher bar, but you allow the developer to do smaller lots, which, in, you know, when you think about it, smaller lots makes a lot of sense to a developer, because they get more lots on their land. But we're not allowing them more lots on the land. We're allowing them what we've already allowed under our density allowances. We're just creating a method for them to actually achieve that, because we've got other mechanisms in our zoning code that pretty much prevent that from happening. So, the developer gets more lots, but what you'll talk, when you talk to developers, and what you'll hear is, they're not necessarily interested in smaller lots. What they're interested in doing is reducing the costs of the overall infrastructure of a subdivision. When you require all of the houses to be on streets with curb, gutter, and sidewalk, that translates to what they refer to as a lot of frontage on expensive infrastructure. By doing different types of housing, say, allowing to have a couple of fourplexes or townhomes in there, you're getting more units in less space on less frontage, so that's less cost. And then, of course, you know, the principle being, if they're able to more, get more return out of it, because they have more units, they're also able to put more money back into it to make it a more interesting and aesthetically pleasing environment.
So, is that, John, excuse me. So, you keep saying aesthetically pleasing. Is that, that's to the contractor, the builder? Because to me, there's nothing aesthetically pleasing about population density, houses right next to each other in the model that you're showing. I don't find anything...
So, by aesthetically more pleasing, we have higher design standards for the houses themselves, for how the lots are laid out, for, we don't have any landscaping requirements per se, but that tends to come along with most standard houses. But you get more open space, and more usable open space. So, what we're trying to do is allow the developers to provide more open space, and still be able to get their, the number of units that, like I said, it's a slight increase in the number of units than they would have been able to under a standard subdivision, but it's really no different than what our underlying zoning already accounts for. So, when we talk about, if you go back to the comprehensive plan designations, we talked about, we did the buildable lands analysis. We looked at, for all the R5 zone, we assumed five units per acre on the developable land in the R5. So, it's really the same amount of density that we've planned for, and that we've allowed in the zoning. So, this is gonna be in the R5 and the R7 zone, which means, and the R1 zone. The, that which means, in the R7 zone, you get seven units per acre. Right now, in the R7 zone, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet for a single family, and 9,000 square feet for a duplex. So, in the R7 zone, you're already getting, it is more possible to get seven units per acre, depending on the piece of land. But, the idea is, of the PRD, is to make a subdivision that is more interesting for the community and for the residents. And we're trying to create a better product, and that's the whole point of this. So, I know it's hard to see on these, the difference between it, but these are the same lot. This has, the PRD has lots shared on an alley for the cars, but then open space on the front. And these are, I can provide examples of these in Mount Vernon, that the house's front on an open green space, and it's, it's a nice walkway.
John?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does the lots have parking on the lot?
It doesn't, it doesn't change the parking requirement. Every parking, every...
That's listed in here.
Every resident, every lot is still gonna be required to have two parking spaces, two independently mobile parking spaces per residence. And they still have a 25-foot parking strip requirement in front of all garages. So, it doesn't change the parking. We do address in the standards, how many off-street parking spaces are required.
And it looks like it's requiring driveways. Is that right?
It's requiring parking.
So, when it, only it says your locations of driveway shall be designed into the master plan?
So, what that means is, they can't, the developer can't just build all the streets without having an idea of where their driveways are gonna go. I mean, they need to look ahead at the design phase to know where they're gonna put their garages. Mount Vernon goes so far as requires them to have houses, house plans submitted and approved before a PRD is approved. The Planning Commission did not choose to have that high a level of requirement in the Cedroly Code, but we do require that. It's not gonna be rolled curbs like you see out at Soft Mountain View Estates. Developers love the rolled curbs, because they don't have to plan for where their driveways go, and it's easier for them to pour. But rolled curbs, what I see is people like to just roll their car up on it and park on the parking strip next to it. So, there, we actually have a requirement, I mean, this is the level of detail that we've gotten down into, is a requirement for typical square curbs, so that people can't park on...
Wherever they want?
Wherever they want. And that requires the flat designer to look at things such as, where are the driveways gonna be? Which way are the houses gonna front? What are, you know, what are the sides of the houses gonna have to be designed like, in order to make sure that they meet these design review requirements? You know, say you're on a corner. We don't want an ugly side of a house with, you know, one little bathroom window and two stories of blank wall. So, none of that's, that would be allowed, but would typically be required under a standard, or allowed under a standard subdivision. So, these are the higher level of aesthetic review that I'm talking about. So, one of the basic tenets of how many units one can get on, and this will, this will address some of concerns about density, and the Planning Commission spent a lot of time talking about it. So, what you have is two lots here. It's the exact same lot, actually. One, if you can read the print, that is actually in 32 font, which should be plenty large, but it is small to see. I apologize. On the left... On the left is a depiction of the twenty-acre lot with wetlands on three corners of it. So, if you don't account for those wetlands, it would be allowed, at twenty acres, five units per acre in the R5 zone, that would be able to get one hundred units onto this piece of property. On the left, it shows the same thing, except for, on the left, it's, don't worry about that proposed road in there, that doesn't actually matter. What I'm talking about is two different types of, two different ways of looking at how to calculate the density. On the left, it's gross site density, which means, if you have twenty acres, you multiply that times five units per acre, you're allowed one hundred acres, one hundred units, and you put that on there, you're still not allowed to develop where those wetlands are. So, that means, all those hundred units have to go in the area where there's no wetlands or buffers. On the right is net density. So, you have the same twenty-acre lot, but before you start calculating your density, you remove all of the wetland and buffer areas and say, those areas just basically don't exist as far as development goes. So, on this one on the right, about thirty percent of that twenty-acre lot, or six acres, is encumbered by wetlands and buffers. So, you only get to use, the developer will only get to use, that seventy percent of the lot for density purposes, as well as development, as well as development purposes. So, on the right, they only get seventy units. And that way, you're not, and the concept is, you're not squeezing a hundred units onto land that seventy units would typically be for seventy units. That is the difference between gross density on the left and net density on the right. This was a topic that came up several times, that's why I'm bringing it up to the council. Normally, I don't get to this level of detail in presenting to the council on an ordinance, but the development community wanted gross density, and the planning commission determined that that would be allowing too much density on too little of land under most circumstances, so they elected to go with net density.
So, true buildable land?
Correct.
Okay.
So, what issues have we ran into in the last fourteen years that we haven't had the, I guess, the PRD regulations?
Soft Mountain View Estates. But it was, after that development went through, and the council at the time saw that the open space that was provided was a, I think it's about nine hundred square foot park, two hundred and twenty-five units, and a nine hundred square foot park, and then power line park. So, we accepted all, all of the open space was completely unusable. I mean, I suppose you can go for a walk under there if you don't mind your hair standing up on it. So, somewhat usable, but it's not developable as a park, we can't even put a park bench in there because of the power line easement. So, the council saw that the PRD did not allow, did not have proper protections to make sure that there was open space, and so they gutted it. And they gutted the ordinance. And so, this was our, that's why we're very careful reviewing it to make sure that usable open space is allowed. You can see in this ordinance, one of the longest sections is, what is usable space? How much usable space is required? And how much open space is required? So, we went into a lot of detail on that.
So, what year was Soft Mountain Estates built?
Approved in two thousand one, I want to say.
I guess my, what, the question I want to answer is, what problems have we had since then? Or are we, have we just gotten lucky? Or are we...
Oh, well, the ordinance hasn't existed. I mean, we've had an ordinance, but it's been so stripped down that it hasn't served any purpose, it hasn't been useful for a developer to want to use it, to put a higher level of review. What the council had done in two thousand five, or two thousand four, was they eliminated the ability to have different housing types, and they eliminated the ability to go to smaller lot sizes. I mean, you can get down to six thousand square feet in the R7, but that's already the standard minimum lot size in the R7. You're allowed to go down to six thousand square feet in the R5 right now, under the existing PRD ordinance that we're amending, but that doesn't really get you really far. So, it was, you know, this was brought as a request from the development community to be able to address the issue of, they want to be able to cluster, to reduce their infrastructure costs. And so, more creative concepts like having houses, more houses fronting on, like alleys, that would be street-like alleys, but not full streets, as shown in this example, going across the middle, you see two greenways. So, all, you know, those eight, sixteens, or, you know, twenty or so lots are facing on green space instead of facing on a traditional city street.
So, what's stopping them from doing it now?
Our code doesn't really allow the flexibility in our standard subdivision code to allow this. Our standard subdivision code requires that you have twenty feet on a public street. So, it's an amalgamation of all these small little things and the changes that were done to the PRD ordinance that haven't allowed developers to do anything other than a standard subdivision, and they would, and there's been several requests to do so. And, you know, from a planning perspective, allowing a variety of different lot sizes and different housing types is something that makes a development more interesting. Not that there's anything wrong with a, you know, I don't want to use the word homogenous, but, you know, in a subdivision, that's going to be all the same lot sizes down a linear street, you know, that's good. And, you know, but we want to be, you know, some people want that, some people want something different. And so, providing different housing options is the way to go. Some people are also going to talk about smaller lot sizes, they're going to allow for, you know, more housing affordability, and this ordinance really does allow for townhouse-style house buildings. And I think the example in Klinger Estates, there's rows of townhouses sort of in the center there, built on green space. That's something that I believe has been effective. It's been well-received, it's been well-maintained, and those units are sold, so people must like living there. So, that's not allowed under our standard subdivision code. We're bringing that ability back. And, you know, to address, to make sure that these, that any development stays nice, we do have higher level, a higher level of requirements for homeowners associations built into here to require maintenance. So, we tried to, we tried to address all of the negative perceptions and problems that one sees with smaller lot sizes, and provide some sort of mitigation and to ameliorate those, or to just prevent it from getting too far. For example, on page forty, starting on page forty-two and going through page forty-three, talks about how small lot sizes may be in each zone. It's very, it's very detailed, actually. You're allowed to go as far, as small as forty-eight hundred square feet, for example, but, you know, the average has to be no less than twenty percent, the average of all of the single-family lots can't be less than twenty percent of what the standard minimum lot size of eighty-four hundred square feet is. So, that's sixty-seven, sixty-seven-twenty square feet, it needs to be the average of all the lots, excluding the townhome and duplex lots. So, that's just one example of how we've tried to address allowing smaller lots, allowing different types of housing, but not letting it get too small, and not letting them all be small. The whole idea is to have a wide variety of different lot sizes, including smaller lots that would typically be allowed. We've got to give some concessions to the developers if we're going to ask that they do a higher level of design and construction. Our previous, back, you know, the PRD ordinance that was basically gutted in two thousand four, allowed for density bonuses. So, a density bonus is a whole nother concept that I haven't got into yet. That is allowing additional units beyond that base five units per acre or seven units per acre in the R5, R7 respectively, for doing something that's going to make the project better, in, you know, the planning eyes. That was not really brought back, except for one small part. We had a request to allow a density bonus if the developer provides a community house, a community center. So, that would be owned by, owned and maintained by the homeowners association. And the planning commission really liked the idea of encouraging a community center in a subdivision, because it gives the people in the community a place to meet and, you know, have parties for families and whatnot. And so, that was considered an amenity that is desirable enough to allow a density bonus of a whole two units per ten acres. So, if you have a ten, you have to have ten acres, and if you, then if you do a community center, then you get an additional two units of density allowed. And then, if you have twenty acres, then you would get four units, et cetera. I think I've gone through everything that I really wanted to present to the council on the ordinance itself. I'm not going to get into the details, there's a lot there, so I'll let the council go through that. And if you have any questions about it, feel free to talk to me anytime, and I can, and fill you in on any specific details. And of course, right now, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for John currently?
Seems like we've been looking at this for a while, and it has been approved by the building department, I mean, by the planning commission, and they approved it unanimously, it looks like, on our documents here.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
I'm just curious if the rest of the council here would be ready to move on it or not.
No.
You're not ready?
No.
And it's a first read, there's a lot of information here. Yeah. So, John, I just want to say our thanks to you and to the planning commission, because I know that there was a great deal of work and a lot of thought that went into this. I, in reading through it the first time, I realized there was a lot of detailing that was implemented here that was not there before. So, I, on behalf of the council, we just want to say thank you, and if you could extend that to the planning commission, let them know we appreciate their hard work, that'd be appreciated.
Of course. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. So, if there's anything else, there's informational items, any questions or concerns on the informational items? If not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right, so done. Have a good night.